He did turn the volume down.
That's he told I talked to him this morning. It's nine o'clock, we will call our meeting to order. Uh, roll call please.
Bobbit.
Here.
Ronk.
Here.
Hess.
Here.
We do have a quorum, please bow your head in prayer. Dear Father, as we gather here today, let us be mindful of the work this place before us. I ask that you will lend us a helping hand, dear Lord, as we still our hearts and open them up to hear your words, dear the Lord, as you give us the guidance and direction that we need. I ask that you be with all of our leaders, our president, our vice presidents, senators, congressmen, all of those who are elected to office, dear Lord, uh, down, all the way down to county commissioners, dear Lord, because we too need your guidance and direction. Help us that we maintain America to be a free, one nation under God. We are here to give our service to you, dear Lord, as we dedicate our word to you, and we hope that you find it pleasing in all that we do. We thank you for the many blessings you have given us, the safe and bountiful harvest, dear Lord, and again, I ask that you be with those that are traveling, um, throughout these months, summer months, that we all take care, dear Lord, and look to you again, and we give you all the praise and glory, and to your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Cindy, would you read some facts?
This is what you...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, Nellie, so the agenda was properly posted in accordance with the Open Meeting Act.
Consider an act on the minutes for the regular June 4th meeting and the special June 6th meeting. Do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, I would entertain...
I have it as the 4th, and it should be the 14th.
Okay, well, I believe that's a typographical...
It's a typo, yeah.
Let the, uh, minutes reflect that the agenda had a typographical error on the minutes. It should be June 14th.
Just now saw that.
Sorry about that.
I didn't catch it either. Do you have any additions or corrections, or a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Hess moved, Ronk seconded to approve the June 14th regular meeting and the June 6th special meeting, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously.
Oh, see, Alex caught you a tippy cap, huh?
Yeah.
Comments from the public on the below agenda item? Any comments?
None.
None?
None for me.
Item A, transfer appropriations, do we have any transfers?
No.
None?
Moved to review purchase orders and travel claims.
Second.
Ronk moved, Hess seconded to review the payment of purchase orders and travel claims, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously.
Go ahead, that's those your done stamps?
Yes, they're done stamps.
Cindy, we have a account set, signed on legal, and that should come out of legal.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah.
Okay.
Get that out of legal. Sure will. We can, I think we can sign it if we just...
If we just change it?
Just make sure we get everything changed. Yeah, reprint it, we just need to make sure we get it changed.
Hi, can I talk to Alex, please? Okay. Hello, um, can you look up what the account number would be under the general fund for, is it under professional services, I think? Professional services.
It, uh, it's legal, it's...
It, uh, we're gonna, the one on that reimbursement for when I sent out those appeal hearing mailings, she went, we're gonna run it through legal, yeah, rather than M and O. Professional services. Should be like, oh, oh, one dash one dash two thousand, and then...
Oh, I never missed those.
I don't know.
Okay, what's twenty dash six?
That may be under...
Twenty twenty, okay, that's what I was looking at. Okay, all righty, will do, thank you. Okay, bye-bye.
I'll see him back, because he almost hung the experts, just make sure everybody is available and they'll talk about that stuff. He's the one who told me to bring him in.
Oh, okay.
Alex, I would take those over there if you were ready. So, thank you.
Hi, it's Cindy again, sorry about you. Will you be available later when we get to the one on the phone back quotes that didn't go through the proper procedure? Or be... Okay, okay, well, we'll, I'll check with you when we get to that point. Okay, thank you, bye-bye.
Want one bottle of water?
Oh, yes, I'd like, thank you.
I know.
Thank you.
You did get Pat, thank you.
Hmm?
I'm getting that contract.
Oh, yeah.
Shady Melody should have been dated down here either, on your, for your name and stuff.
Oh.
You know, on all these.
Put a sticker on the front of the folder.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'll go through them.
Yeah, I'll fuck them, yeah.
This week, we had a fuel truck, a light, a vehicle.
Really?
Killed several people.
Oh. When was this yesterday?
It was Saturday.
Wow.
I told my private friend, uh, a late, uh, fishing on, and he was one of the families, and they had, uh, casino closed down, and everything.
Okay. Wow.
What day are we shutting off POs?
Friday?
No, Thursday, I think it is.
Is it Thursday or Friday?
Thursday first.
One of the other, yeah.
Be Friday or Thursday, yeah.
Thursday, okay.
Next week, Monday, Thursday first.
Hey, Donna, do we need any more blankets or anything? Uh, we're gonna shut the POs off Thursday. Are you good, D? Okay. Well, I forgot to ask you this morning, so... Okay, good enough, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, bye-bye. Donna, I think we're good to go.
Good. I'll send a reminder email, I can, just to...
Okay. Well, I told her last week, I said, if you see something we need to get, we'll get a blanket, and that way we won't be... Looks different without the visco on the other side of the...
I like it, don't you like it?
I do too, yeah.
Yeah, that's actually... Something that we wanted to talk to you about, not today, I think they're kinda working at some, 'cause you really felt like you could save someone if I don't put in the windows and it could look better to...
The problem is, is that we use that door so much in the north in the winter, and you got rain coming in, and everything is, it's, it's like everything else, it comes through the doorway, I, I, yeah, I think it's up to...
Is this the place?
This is it, come on in. Hi, how are you?
I don't know what you're after.
Do you mind signing in for me?
Yes.
Please.
Need some coffee or something?
Oh, I've been sitting.
Hi, I forgot to pick up the bids out of the, uh, folder, did you bring them or have someone bring them to me, see, for the farm? Yeah, I'm bringing that folder, if you will, too, that has all the farm listings. Okay, thank you.
I want to say, huh?
Is it nine thirty yet?
I'm here for the future, eh?
How much do I left, Ed?
Oh, probably eight hundred acres or so. Hopefully get through east town before the rain hits, if that's gonna hit. Weed war is kinda on.
It is. Quickly.
Yeah. Some of these fields, I don't know if they even dealt with cutting yet, if it's bad now.
Yeah. There's some guys up our way that started cutting on the field, and it wasn't making enough to pay to cut, so they just quit.
I've heard both sides, that it was really good, and then also...
It's been all over the board.
Has it?
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve purchase orders and travel claims.
Second.
Sharon said he's got another week of coming.
Hess moves, Ronk seconds to approve the payment of purchase orders and travel claims, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously. Blankets?
I move to approve blanket purchase orders.
Second.
Ronk moved, Hess seconded to approve blankets as presented, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously.
I make a motion to approve the treasurer's allocation of alcoholic beverage tax for May of 2018.
I'll second that.
Hess moved, Ronk seconded to approve the treasurer's allocation of alcohol beverage tax in the amount of eight thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty cents, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously.
I move to approve the treasurer's mortgage certification fee appropriation for May of 2018.
I'll second that.
Ronk moved, Hess seconded to approve the treasurer's mortgage certification fee appropriation in the amount of eighty dollars for May of 2018, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously. We have the, uh, certificate of returns of resale for real estate for delinquent taxes as of June 3rd, 2018. Um, it was properly, uh, from our treasurer, Penny Dow, and she's got her certificate of returns showing that she was properly advertised in the Patriot Star on, uh, May 16th, May 23rd, May 30th, and June 6th. She so, shows that the, um, resale was held on June 11th, that started at nine o'clock, um, that the property auctioned for as is lot fifteen and sixteen lots two, original town of June Creek.
Okay, this needs to be added to what we've come up with for work.
The delinquent record owner was Jimmy L. and Leanne M. Trent. The tax and cost and penalty were four hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-one cents. Their bidders were Lach O'Hill, Darren Jameson, Seth Michael, and Eddie Campbell. It was sold to Eddie and Felicity Campbell for two thousand dollars, says it's excess of one thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-nine cents. Thank you. The second, um, the second lot was lot five block two, town of Salt Fork. The, uh, owner of record was a Helen McGinnis, eight rows. The taxes against it was three hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-eight cents. They had one vendor of Ron Mendenhall, and it was successfully sold to Mendenhall Drilling for three hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-eight cents. You had a third property that it was...
They, um, called the Friday before and paid the, uh, for this back tax of 2014, so they moved it from the sale.
Okay. All right, we need to acknowledge that this resale was, uh, properly conducted.
I acknowledge that. The resale was properly conducted.
Second.
Aye.
Um, Hess moved, Bobbit seconded to acknowledge the certificate of retail, return of resale for the real estate delinquent taxes as of June 11th, 2018, and it was properly, properly held, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got about another minute, can we take care of item G? Acknowledge the correction for the DA's office for ninety-four dollars, it was encumbered on, uh, May 15th to M and O, and it should have been professional services, do we have any motion to acknowledge that?
Still moved.
Second.
Ronk moved, Hess seconded to acknowledge the, sort of, correction for the DA's office for ninety-four dollars encumbered out of M and O, and it should have been professional services, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously. It is nine twenty-nine, that's about thirty seconds. You can go ahead and start sitting there, we're just about there.
I make a motion that we, uh, drop down to item M. And open the bids.
I'll second that.
Hess moves, Ronk seconds to move from item G to item M and open bids, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All, all ayes, motion carried unanimously. All, all eyes, motion carried unanimously. The first bid is from Schultz Brothers. Um, they are bidding on farm number one, which is farm USDA farm forty-eight eighty-six, in the southeast quarter of twenty-three, twenty-six, six, containing a hundred and forty-five acres, more or less. Their bid is four thousand five hundred dollars, and a no bid on farm number two. That's the only bid we did not receive, we bid on farm number two.
So we have one on that.
Yeah, I need to call a professional.
Yeah. See if they remember.
I bet you forgot.
I bet you did too.
Can we go back out for bid after the first of the month?
Yeah, we can do it again. Um, do you remember what you bid last year, I'm just curious? Same, okay, alright.
I move to...
One bid, when only one bid, yeah, okay, thank you.
I, I move to accept Schultz Brothers' bid of forty-five hundred dollars annually on USDA farm number four eight eight six.
Second that motion.
Wrong moved, has seconded to accept the bid from Schultz Brothers for forty-five hundred dollars annually for a three-year contract on USDA farm forty-eight eighty-six. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Wrong?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much for your bid. And then, do I have your, is that, is this the correct address? Is that your address?
Yes, it's mine.
Okay, alright, so I'll get the contract ready, I mean, I have the template, but I'll get it ready.
I'll come back and sign it later.
Okay, well, whatever. Do you wanna give me your phone number?
Sure.
And then I'll just, uh...
I, I can just text it to you.
You got it, okay.
If he needs to get it going, yeah, I've got it.
Yeah, okay, I'll get it, I'll get it for him.
I'll call Kevin, and he just needs to come out.
Yeah, we'll probably have to go out for bid again.
We'll have to check with the DA, since we didn't get one, what we've gotta do.
Have him give me a call, if you will.
Okay.
I'll talk to him, too.
You will, okay.
You wanna just call him then?
Yeah.
If that works for me.
I gotta talk to him about something.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. See you, Dus.
Need a motion to return up to item H.
Still moved.
Second.
Wrong moved, has seconded to return, uh, move back up to item H, and acknowledge the cash voucher claim.
At nine thirty?
Nine...
Thirty-eight?
Nine thirty-eight, nine, nine thirty-four.
Nine thirty-four, okay, you're right.
All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Wrong?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. This is a cash voucher, this is showing that, uh, um, it was a forfeiture of, uh, on a drug bust that was, uh, done with the city of Medford and the Grant County Sheriff Department. And it is being split, um, the total, yeah, let me have to see. It's seventy-one thousand five hundred and fourteen forty-eight to be distributed to Medford City Police Department. And then they, they, oh, they got, they got, then they, then the, uh, asset forfeiture gets nine hundred and ninety-nine. Medford Police, seven oh six ninety-two, District Attorneys. That isn't right.
They had money in there previously.
Yeah, see, so, the total. This, now, maybe this page will tell us, yes. Yeah, it's a seventy-five twenty-five split, with costs are seven hundred and six dollars ninety-two. The forfeiture is nine ninety-nine that the DA gets, and the city of Medford gets sixty-nine thousand eight oh eight fifty-six.
Yeah, let's, let's look that before we approve this.
We had already, yeah.
Yeah, but, and that, and maybe I didn't need to run it back through, but I just, well, since it was going through our KEL process, and I would prefer to run it back through, and then we have Stephen run, and Stephen signed off on it.
That's just good business.
I think it's good business.
So they are getting seventy-one thousand, am I right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, they're getting sixty-nine thousand, 'cause there's some expenses against it.
Expenses and then the DA's share of it.
Yeah.
That Medford paid all of, that the county owed twenty-five percent of. Doesn't say on that sheet from the DA, though, that seventy-one thousand is what goes to the city of Medford, it says on that...
Oh, is it, is it broke down, how they claim it?
Yeah, it says, I have reviewed the claim for seventy-one five fourteen for Medford Police Department, prepared by Stephen Young, and I authorized a transfer of nine ninety-nine, seven oh six, and, uh, sixty-nine eight oh eight percent to the drug forfeiture to the Medford Police Department and District Attorney's Office.
There's three, three amounts, they're going into three different pots.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you put lots of money?
I'll look it over, I'll go before we actually...
Okay.
Should all die.
So, um, all in favor?
Did someone make a motion?
Oh.
I made a motion.
I'm sorry.
I second.
So, all in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Wrong?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. Is this the contract for what we bid, is that...
Yeah, that, that, this, yeah, that, yeah. So, I move to approve, yeah, oh yeah, more than I want to. I'm going to approve the contract between Grant County District Three and K and O Construction for the labor on Bridge two seventy and two seventy-one A.
Second.
Okay, so, wrong moved, has seconded to approve the contract between K and O Construction and Supply Company and Grant County D three on the labor on Bridge on two seventy and two seventy-one A, as approved May fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, on bid oh seven eighteen, and as approved by ADA, um, all in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Wrong?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously.
Before we go any further, that's the first contract for labor that I've seen us do on a bridge. Um, I mean, since I've been around. Is that a common, supposed to be a commonplace, or not?
No, I had one when I did it with, um, oh, what?
River Ridge?
Yes, thank you.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
I just, I did not remember ever doing that before.
Yeah, with River Ridge. Yeah, I've done several with River Ridge.
I was hoping that they would get some cleanup language passed, that would clean that up, so everybody knows, you know?
Whether it had to be the same...
Yes. But I know whenever you go out for bids for that, you have to do the contract thing.
Yeah, you can probably look back, and I, I'm gonna guess it, that's pretty standard contract that they all use.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, that's, that's the deal, it's, it's either do it every time, or not do it. Not do it.
Did, did Alex, did you all, did you guys see anything on the purchase card?
There was a, was a purchase order on there.
There was, there was, okay, yeah, we need to acknowledge it.
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Yeah.
It's in the D team folder.
Yeah, I got it, yeah. So the, for, for the, uh, P card approval for May of two thousand eighteen, totaling sixteen dollars.
That we already sent?
Yeah.
I, I move to approve.
Uh, I will second that, but didn't we, wasn't we doing a clarification as to what that P card could be used for? Wasn't there something said about that?
Yeah, we're just using them for things that you, we do not have, like, our account, like, if we've already got an account with them, like Staples, or Lowe's, or, if we've already got them...
Then we don't.
Then we don't need to use it. This is when you get to the point where that's all they'll take.
Hotel residences.
Sometimes, sometimes hotels, sometimes they'll do direct billing, but sometimes they don't.
I'd bet some places that we could get parts from.
Right, that, yeah.
Online.
Yeah, exactly, and get them cheaper, but they will only take a P card or a credit card, so, yeah, and then that's fine.
I second that.
So, wrong moved, has seconded to approve the purchase card of, of form for May twenty eighteen, totaling sixteen dollars. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Wrong?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously.
He, yeah, I decided yes, because like, well, that Teen Viewer, it's a program that allows me to, like, work from at night, near my house, and, you know, you know, I've been using it for me, and it made me feel bad, 'cause it's like, do you like it? Buy it now, and I'm, and it's always supposed to be, um, commercial, it's supposed to be for it, so.
Alright, so we have a, uh, designation of purchase card holder Cindy Pratt with a limit of fifteen hundred dollars. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Hess moved, wrong, seconded to approve Cindy Pratt for a P card in the amount of maximum of fifteen hundred dollars. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Wrong?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. Acknowledgement of credit to Grant County Health Department, overpayment of maintenance service by Scott Falkenberg, so...
And I did talk to, uh, it was my fault, I talked to Stephen, and he said just to, that we needed just to do a credit back, and I visited with Penny about it just a little bit this morning. So I did make up this little worksheet, and I have the, um, what happened was, um, you know, we had it at the four hundred and eighteen, so, and I had my invoice set up, and I just changed the date. Well, then, they, she renegotiated it for January one of two thousand and eighteen to Ju-, to the lot, to Ju-, yeah, and, um, so, but I kept billing them for four eighteen, and they kept paying, so, um, here's kinda what I made up.
Do we need to, do we not, do we need to just pay it back, 'cause it's in different fiscal years?
Right, okay, yeah, not a credit, okay. Here's kinda what I did, was here's what you, you, we billed and was paid, and this is where they...
Changed it over here, I saw it.
Right, okay, so they paid this warrant, let's see, I kinda did this, okay, the five thousand twenty-five, which was for fiscal year two thousand sixteen seventeen, was paid on twelve twelve of seventeen, which is over here.
Okay.
Okay, and then, uh, the next column here, the two, which was for...
To the, this year, July eighteen.
Yeah. Oh, no, that was seventeen. Yeah, it was just six months, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
And so, that was paid that.
Okay.
Okay, so then...
We started monthly until seventeen, right.
Oh, that one's not right, actually, 'cause they haven't paid, oh, that would've been the correct rate.
Yeah, that January, February, March, April, and May.
But they actually had, um, paid this amount, so, I know it's probably...
It's alright.
Here's where they paid this, and they paid that, okay.
They actually owed, but they should've had one more month that they owed.
Right, they, so they do still owe one more month.
At two seventeen, so, so, what are we gonna do, they just gonna, we're gonna, at the end, well, at the end, that'll take care of them paying the next month, and we're still overpaid, right?
Right.
Got it.
But should I pay them back?
Yeah.
And then just bill them for the correct amount for the last month, do you think, for the two seventeen, or just...
It'd be easier, but they'll have to get the PO in place by the twenty-first to have it all go through a fiscal year, but it, it doesn't matter, if, if you can track it, if, if you wanna do it this way, it's fine.
I'll kinda clean that up a little bit, towards a little more.
So you'll need to bill them for one eighty-five eighty-eight?
No, actually, we owe them back. We actually owe them a hundred and eighty-five eighty-eight.
We probably just need to issue them once.
Okay.
Because it, for their fiscal year...
And I'll, I'll clean this up, and provide them a copy of that.
And let them get it.
Yeah. PO to pay us.
And I've got copies of all the contracts and everything, too, so I'll just attach all that, and we'll scan that into the, so...
We need to get a PO to pay them back.
Right, I'll kinda clean that up a little bit, and then, okay.
That'll be good.
Okay. And I apologize.
Yeah, alright, well, we didn't catch it either.
Was just one of those like, oh. When I started, when I started pulling up their contract, I'm looking, I'm like, oh, two hundred and, oh crap, I forgot about that, and then I started looking, I'm, ooh, and they've been paying.
So, um, board probably needs to acknowledge that their, uh, a hundred and eighty-five dollars and whatever it was, a hundred and eighty-five eighty-eight, uh, needs to be issued as a refund, so, let's just acknowledge that. You make a motion.
Alright, I, I move to acknowledge that amount of one eighty-five eighty-eight.
And repay.
And, and repay in fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen.
I'll second that motion.
Wrong moved, has seconded to acknowledge the balance overpayment to Grant County Health Department on the maintenance service by Scott Falkenberg in the amount of one eighty-five eighty-eight, and to reimburse them that in the fiscal year two thousand eighteen. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Wrong?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. Lease purchase agreements with Community National Bank of Oak Park Chief for the six twenty-four four with a load, I believe that's District Two, yes, and in two thousand seventeen, John Deere six seventy-two, Chief Motor Grader for District One. And, uh, three of it, do you, do you have a motion?
I make a motion to renew.
Second.
Hess moved, wrong, seconded to renew the lease purchase agreement with Community National Bank of Oak Park Chief for the two thousand sixteen load for District Two, and the two thousand seventeen, John Deere Motor Grader for District One. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Wrong?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously.
Now we got our quote for SIG. How much is it?
I'll just, that's kinda all the paperwork, but I'll just...
Okay, okay, yeah, that's fine, Cindy can look at it.
That's in there, it's... It is. Two million five hundred dollars, you know?
True, man.
But I think we still have time to do things.
Listen to this.
I'm sorry, I've got...
That's alright, that's alright, I'm gonna get, okay.
There we go.
There we go, okay, yep. Huh, I thought my deductible was twenty-five, they show us, yeah, five, five deductible. Oh, unused twenty-nine, I got you.
Yeah.
Unused got you twenty-nine, line up, so the total outlay is a hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars. So the resolution is, is to make one payment of one hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-three, or to make two payments...
Which I have, if I'm gonna know that.
Yeah, which is... I have a three percent on top of that, but I wanna see what the...
Yeah, that's all, that's all I had.
Hmm, well, it would be, it would be three, they add three percent on it, they add three percent, so it's one twenty-five nine seventy-three, and they add three percent, so, I have to do... It would make it, uh, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-two, so, we've got the money.
I move to pay the one time of one twenty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars.
Second.
Wrong moves, has seconds to approve the echo SIG for two thousand eighteen nineteen with a payment option of one-time outlay of a hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars to pay, be paid, be, by July thirtieth. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Wrong?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. And Cindy, you know, on that budget deal, remember, you have to make sure that, because those are due, oh, I guess I'll assign that.
Yeah.
But, uh...
To get it in there, but then to get it out, of, get it...
Get it moved over there, yeah. So, let's see, this is the one that says that... This is the one time.
See, that'll be over seven thousand seventy-five hundred dollars that we've saved by paying it one time.
Exactly. So we've got...
Which is over a third of the way to the, to a deductible.
Yeah.
You can come on in.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna interrupt you here.
Yeah, just sign in.
Come on in. Hi Randy, hi.
I'm there.
Hi Jim.
Hi.
Hi. We got a little bit, we get to a little bit.
Okay, there's several pages there.
I think you're telling me you think I'm bashful. She's about bashful, aren't you?
Yeah, we know better.
I know. Kind of a fun, well, I was putting my pants on half the time, so then my shoulder was out here and had a baby and I was like.
Let's see, and we have my, not from Stephen Young on the contract.
No, I do have the resolution, if you want to go ahead and do the resolution or do you want to wait?
We probably ought to do it together.
Okay.
Why don't we for now skip over that and if he comes in later in the meeting, we can move up to that.
Okay.
If that's alright.
Sure.
About a few more minutes before ten o'clock.
It's okay.
We're early.
That was good.
Better early than late.
Yeah.
Alrighty.
Um, we have our annual random drug testing, annual consortium agreements and Integro Spas occupational medicine for all our district shops and our safety sensitive personnel and the AD has reviewed this contract and he has signed off onto it. We have a motion to sign the agreement and the resolution.
I make a motion that we skip down to item R and that we address the resolution, approve the resolution twenty eighteen dash fifty-six for the random drug testing consortium.
And the annual consortium agreement.
Yes, and I second.
Hess motions to move from item O to item R to approve the contract, the resolution twenty eighteen fifty-six for the random drug testing and the annual consortium agreement with Integro Spas occupational medicine for the one, two, three and our safety sensitive for FY nineteen. All in favor?
Robert, aye.
Rock?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously. And then can you scan these and send these to us, we need these with our packets, it's probably required.
I'll also scan the insurance verification thing between you all today. Sig, Rock Sig, whatever you want.
You're gonna have a Sig?
I didn't word that right, yeah.
You're gonna have a Sig?
Mm-hmm.
Do I need to fit my name up?
You're never filling that.
On, yeah, on that one you do.
Yeah.
Outside your name.
How are you doing, Larry? Hanging in there.
Sweat, man, sorry. It's easy to do. Yeah, just about do it, getting out of bed, right? Well, you made it back.
I did.
In the leg.
Been nice to think. Lot was a little rough. We have a thirteen year old, a ten year old with us, so they did a lot of tubing, which is fine, we should just be into it. And think, oh, I used to be able to do that.
Started tubing when I gave up skiing.
I used to be able to do that and then be able to get on walk the next day.
I drive the boat now.
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
I take you to the grand kids.
Okay, item S is in a local agreement Canadian County Sheriff's Office and the Grant County Sheriff's Office FY eighteen nineteen. It is asking for Grant County to house, provide housing and boarding for inmates from Canadian County at the rate of eighteen dollars per day per inmate. I would like the records to show that the DOC, I believe, pays twenty-three to twenty-seven dollars and Sheriff Sterling and Judge Hammond Tree have acknowledged that the actual cost for boarding is forty dollars a day.
It might be to my benefit anyway, start the cloud up out there.
Yeah.
Be a little easier on me.
I'd like to talk to Sheriff Sterling before we did that.
Alrighty, so you will table that and.
Yes, I moved a table. Second, would you put it back on next week's agenda, please?
Rock moved has seconds to table the courthouse and, excuse me, the sheriff's in our local agreement with Canadian County. All in favor?
Robert, aye.
Rock?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously. See if you can get it scheduled for him and Stephen to be here for that.
Okay.
It is nine, it is ten o'clock, we need to move down to item B B.
I make a motion that we move from item S down to B B.
Second.
So Hess moves, Rock seconds to move from item S to item B B at ten o'clock. All in favor?
Robert, aye.
Rock?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously.
If it's acceptable, I've got Larry here and I'd like to have him give you an update on construction, where it's at and if you have any questions, we can, we can get those answered. He's got concrete that he's trying to get.
Trying to get some concrete.
So he may disappear on a second.
I understand.
I'm Larry Hand, I'm the project superintendent for the renovation project ongoing. We are, I'd say seventy-five percent complete with the ADA ramp at the entrance at the jail. I'm making my last pour on the ramp today. I'll have, they'll come verify measurements for the handrail, guardrail tomorrow. We hope in two weeks to have that completed. Once I get it, get the handrail up, get it painted, we're safe, then we'll open that up to the public. I'll pull the temporary stairs out, get the landing done. Trying to keep the jail, that door open as much as I can, accessible. Uh, so I'm hoping in a couple of weeks to have that completed, then we'll do the stairs. Window replacement will probably begin this week some point. He told me today, but I talked to him Friday, he's still waiting on glazing. He's building frames as soon as he gets his glazing in. We're gonna start at the courthouse, he's figuring a week and a half per side, so six weeks per, per facility, maybe five weeks on the jail. I have daily field reports that I do every day, we've changed our format and so I don't have it totally right. Once I do get it corrected, then you'll start seeing daily reports for progress. Roofing is supposed to start this week on the courthouse. We're gonna start everything on the courthouse first and then move over to the jail. They're figuring three weeks to put the, to tear off and replace the roof at the jail, or the courthouse and the jail also.
Three weeks per building?
Per building, yes. Uh, in the meantime, I'm doing the concrete work, the various concrete work. We've got some software repair at the jail to do, I'll be working on that in the next couple of weeks. The sump pump basin in the, we're adding a sump pump in the basement of the jail. I'll be starting it this week. And Sober Brothers doing the earthwork and storm drain package, they're gonna start next week. Figuring a couple of weeks to complete their work. The mason, our mason contractor's been here almost a month now repairing various bad mortar joints, doing some repair there. He's also sealing the building with a masonry sealer and it's, it's a good product. Scott Falkenberg was telling me with maintenance, he's telling me that in the, in the basement of the jail, just by doing some of the work we've done already on the, on the east entrance, that a lot of the water has been alleviated coming, we had that, we had three and a half inches rain last week in thirty hours. And we went down to the basement and he's saying, boy, it looks a lot better already. So with the new roof, the gutters, the, some of the, some of these items you're gonna go over later to try to get the water, get it away from the buildings and then after that, let it, let it migrate out on its own. But the main thing is get it out away from the building, so it's not going down. Mason, roof, windows, oh, the interior. Our, our units, our HVAC units are supposed to be here July second. Our HVAC contractor wants to limit the time spent in the courthouse. He doesn't want to interrupt you guys, he wants to interrupt you as little as possible. So he's delayed a little, he's gonna start, I'd say at the end of the month. Couple more weeks, uh, ten days to two weeks.
Lectures could start first.
Yes, yes, yeah, we'll come in and take, we're gonna start on the third floor. We hit the third floor, couple of weeks, second floor, couple of weeks, first floor. I'll have to demo the ceilings out, we have a demo contractor to do that. He'll come in and demo the ceilings first, electrical will come in, do what he needs to do and HVAC as well. But we're figuring a couple of weeks per floor, maybe two and a half weeks per floor.
Now you've gotten with the court clerk about the, for the courtroom, to make sure we can get all of our court proceedings moved.
Yes.
Did you give them, lock them down on dates so they know that they need to.
As soon as I, yes, as soon as I get those days, I'll give plenty of notice and, and I'm waiting to hear back from HVAC contractor, when he is actually gonna start, so then I can schedule my demo.
You might be, you might go up and talk to Dina and just say, here's our preliminary time schedule, is that a good time? I don't know if she's got any jury trials coming up, I mean, I'm not sure how.
You also need to talk to her about the windows too.
Yes.
The windows are gonna affect the court.
Yeah, the only thing, the one thing I have been told, I guess Tuesday, that each side of the courthouse, we need to avoid work on. That's, that's the one thing I've been told, other than that, I need to do something.
But I would check with them on the windows.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they're, the rest of us, we're pretty flexible, but that you've got, it's not just one off, I mean, you've got tons of people from everywhere that are coming in and going and if that's the one you really need, try to get a timeline and tell them what you're thinking. Cause they might be able to say, you know, if any, if all possible, avoid this week, we just cannot reschedule. Or they could move stuff to Ena, but we need to kind of know that.
Yeah, coordination and logistics we knew would, would be a very critical.
For that floor.
But we'll, I'll be on top of that, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. I may be missing something, but that's the.
And I think that's.
That's pretty much it, isn't it? You're gonna go over these items, uh.
Yeah, we'll go through all of those.
I think.
And we're still having our owners' meetings once a month with Cindy and Scott, and that's been very helpful too.
Yeah, she reports to us, it's been very good, thank you for doing that.
Well, anyway. Code for concrete, yeah, let me go back to work.
I want all the concrete poured.
Thank you.
Thank you, God, thank you.
See you later.
Also, I want to bring you up today, we've issued drawings to the state fire marshal, since you don't have a local inspector. We've gotten the courthouse drawings back, the jail drawings on the way, which I don't expect any concerns with either one of them. The, and Larry's already got the courthouse drawings, so the state.
Approved.
Yeah, approved, he's got copies that he has on site, so the state fire marshal have an inspector up here at fifty percent construction and a hundred percent construction. When we move into the next phase, or you guys move into the next phase, whether we're part of it or not, you need to, you need to be careful how much work you're doing or what work you're doing to make sure you don't set off some code requirements on your building. You know, the stuff we're doing with this is maintenance and that's how I benched all of it. And, you know, taking the plywood, the paneling off the walls and repainting the walls, if that's one of the things, it's, it's not an issue. But you want to be real careful because you could set off a fire sprinkler requirement, set off egress requirements trying to get out of the building because you've got one way out of the third floor except an operable window. So I'm just, I want to, I want to warn you that that's out there.
And we want to start putting that plan together, we'd like to roll over from completion of this to starting, so we, we kind of like to already get started on that.
Okay, that would be fine. We, we really need to get a good understanding of what all that scope's gonna include and then that way I can start benching the code side of it.
Okay.
Because I approached this one, it's a level one, which is maintenance, level one or level two, but it basically maintenance. Want to stay out of the level three and it, it has to do with how many walls we're affecting.
We probably just need to get that on the agenda.
For the end of July, let's get our, year, we're closing one year and opening the other. If we could do it the last week of July or first week of August, maybe not the first week of August, we have the, the exercise board, but maybe that. The end of July or middle of, no later than the middle of August.
We just have to be careful. How we're, how we're approaching it and presenting.
Cause we're just wanting to do, we just want to do maintenance and upkeep is what we're, that's our goal.
The state fire marshal's gotten rather aggressive about.
If we wanted to build a new building, we'd have done.
You guys don't need it, I don't need it.
Moving walls.
Right, we're not gonna do that.
That's what, that's what'll trigger.
No, we're not moving.
Yeah, and they always say it's all benching it correctly and then, cause we'll have to do a full codes review on the building.
Right.
And, and I didn't do one because most of what we were doing was outside, so we didn't do a codes review and he was okay with that. So I stepped around it, but I need to, we need to be very careful how we approach today's stuff.
And, and.
Cause I don't want to cost you guys much money if we don't, you know, if we can get around that.
One thing I've noticed that may come up in the future is emergency lighting. We may have to do that. Cause I noticed you don't have any.
Which, which can be changing out one of these fixtures to have built in emergency lighting or putting the, what we call eyeballs.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And it's, you're lighting your path to egress, that's what you're doing with those.
We'll probably have to do that this phase before we're done, but just, just want to warn you on that, that probably coming down the bike. And it shouldn't be that expensive, but it's still, it's still an expense.
There'll be a few things we'll have to pick up, hopefully we can minimize the other things, because I don't want to get into how do we put a fire escape on the side of the building?
No, I don't do that.
You know, and I'm, I'm gonna approach it, this is a historical building and we don't want to do that. But I also don't want to get into him thinking we need to put in fire sprinklers. in, 'cause that would be an expensive.
Oh, yeah.
Problem. And I don't know that it, it's one that we're, we're gonna have to deal with, but we just have to go in with our eyes open and make sure that we, we plan for it and, and work around that. Okay, are you ready for the change orders? I have several change orders, six of them in, in fact. And let you, to let you know that if, if you approve all six of them, we have sixty-five thousand in contingency. Uh, the change orders total up twelve thousand two eighty-five, and we have a deduct item on here of thirty-five hundred that we'll talk about here in a few minutes. So it means that the cost change today is eighty-seven, eighty-five, again, if you accept all of them. So it means we are still sitting on about fifty-six, two twelve in, uh, contingency.
That seems like the proper way to do it.
I do, I just want.
I mean, that's what contingency's for.
Exactly, and, and that's where it should come from. I just wanna let you know that we're not burning up all the contingency, we're, we've still got about fifty-six thousand dollars of dollars out there, um, 'cause I'm sure that they will find something when we're doing the courthouse rough, and, you know, there'll be some, we're trying to keep those to a bare minimum, but, um, I think the owners' meeting's been real good, uh, Cindy and Scott meeting with Jim and, and Larry, and working through things and asking questions. I think we've, we've had contract, subcontractor suggestions on things, and there's a few of those that are in here, but not all the ones that they wanted to do.
And some of this is stuff that, that was added on after the.
Some of this is owner requested, the sheriff requested.
Right, right, I remember that.
All right, so, uh, we'll just go down through them. Um, number one is the glass window installation at the county clerk's office. Uh, this is in the door for the county clerk's office, and, and basically it's replacing the door, it's a thousand one sixty-three.
And that's the cost of the whole door?
Yeah, that's, that's the finish.
That's labor, that's everything.
That's everything, and that gives you the door and glass and installation.
Changing the hardware, I mean, moving the hardware, it's, yeah, it's all in.
You wanna go down through all of them, talk about.
Yeah, just go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, number two is the extension of the west canopy at the jail. We're extending it out about two foot, and this actually goes with number three. Uh, that gets it beyond the steps, and we're going two feet, which is more than we need to go, so that any water dripping off of it has an opportunity not to go down the stairs. Blowing rain, it's still, we're still gonna get some down there. Number three, uh, this is one that kind of is a mix of, of the owners' meeting discussion and some of the things that one of the, uh, subcontractors made a suggestion, is putting a seven-inch stem wall around those stairs that go down to the jail. So we raised that grade up, take the side, the two sidewalks are out there, pour new concrete, which includes filling in that little triangle green with concrete, so everything slopes harder away from those stairs. The canopy within extend the over that, so that we minimize how much water's going down the stairs. Those two items are something that the owners', uh, group talked about, or at the owner meeting they talked about, they felt like that would be a good answer, but adding two, keeping water out of the basement.
Re-lub that step.
And, and, yeah, you had to basically end up with another step. You're gonna, you're gonna have one more step getting out of the basement, but it's gonna push it up, and then all the concrete's gotta seven inches more fall away from the building and away from those, those stairs, uh, in all directions. So that's just an improvement, um, it's, it's, I think it's come out of the owners' meeting, that they're, that's what they're recommending would be, item two and three be done. Came out of some contractor suggestion, which he wanted to basically do everything else in the world and add, add to his contract, and we just didn't agree with it. Number four, does everybody understand what I just rambled through? Okay.
I got a question, that, the, the triangle piece that's, that's landscaped right now, I think they got flowers in it or something, did, you're going to slope that so that drains away from it, right? But you're, so you, you think it's more important to put cement over than having some dirt with it, it absorbs the rain?
Well, it, it will push the water out to the parking lot, which will head it on away from the building. There, there's benefits there.
And then, then the canopy, but the canopy is not going to be over the triangle part?
No.
You're just gonna cement that in?
Right, well, the canopy will, will drop down, will head drop down on some of that raised, um, landing next door, it'll hit some on that triangle that we're infilling, it'll hit on the new walk that's gonna all be sloped away, and then part of it still drops on the, the grass to the south, but because we've raised that up, we've got more slope to get it away from the.
And then you wanna put a seven-inch stem wall that actually go down into the basement along the top there to keep it from.
Right.
Well, you'll, when you add that extra step, that stem wall will match that step, that's why we're saying.
So when you walk out, you will walk out, and you'll step up, and then, so, you will walk out level?
You're, you're gonna walk, if you're walking up to the stairs, you're gonna walk up level, and then be able to slope up to the.
Okay, okay, you're ready.
And then you're gonna step down, we're just creating another step that goes down into that.
So you'll take out all that sidewalk that comes up here and redo all that?
It takes out, it takes out the two sidewalks up there, the main one that you walk to go to the basement, and then there's a two-foot eighteen-inch one, that, that goes away, and it doesn't get replaced.
And bear in mind that, uh, on that triangle, part of your HVAC tunnel is under that triangle, so that's, that concrete should keep that from getting wet as well. 'Cause that, that tunnel's not very far underneath that dirt, yeah.
Okay, um, number four, the sheriff has requested that we change the direction for the fire escape. Right now, you come out that door and you go to the west, he wants to come out the door and go to the east. That sets off, uh, changing out the glazing requirements for the windows, uh, because we passed by two windows, we're already doing that for the one that's under the stairs today, changing it, it's been, it's gonna have wire glass in it, and it's so that if the building's on fire, the glass stays in place longer, so that people can get out of the building without having to come down the stairs with fire coming up from underneath. When we flip it around the other direction, we pass two windows, so those have to be wire glass to protect those windows also, um, so that, again, people can get out of the, the stair, uh, get off the second floor without having to walk through a bunch of fire. It also requires the exit door to be taken out, which is, it's, it's set in masonry, so it's a little bit harder to take out than just a standard, uh, door, but we have to take the door and frame out, so we can flip the door around, so that it's hinged on the other side, so it swings the right direction. Otherwise, when that door opens, you block most of your stairwell, or stairway going down.
We've had this conversation off and on for ten years about flipping that, and I thought the consensus was, was to keep them away from the building in the case of a fire. You didn't want them to come out and stay up against the building while the building's on fire, that's why we're having them exit away from the fire. I don't think that's a good move.
The, the other thing that we discussed this morning, the stairwell today, the, the fire escape is about two feet, two and a half feet, something like that. Today, it's three and a half feet, so it's gonna be wider. When you spin that around the other direction, you're gonna have to widen your drive on the south, on the north side, because you won't be able to get, certainly won't be able to get an ambulance through there. And right now, there's already.
I'm not in favor of that.
There's already tracks going off the edge of the pavement, so.
Cindy, help me out here. Part, just so, so you know why they asked us to do this. Part of it is where, where the fire escape comes down now, um, there's a lot of electrical equipment right there, and that's what they're, Scott is in agreement, he wants to avoid that, having the fire escape avoid that electrical equipment. And, and I'm saying, I'm for it or against it, I'm just telling you what his, what his justifications are, so.
And, and maybe you wanna, maybe you wanna table it and talk to the sheriff and talk to Scott about it further.
Well, I look at that electrical stuff, it's, it's, it's all put in there to code, it's.
Oh, yeah.
Proctounded and everything else.
Yeah, I think so, too. So. We need to get them, if there's a fire, we need them away from the building and, and all the more reason to get them out.
Leaving it the way that is today, going to the west, gets away from the building faster.
Yeah, I, I, I just can't see changing it, keeping them by the building.
I don't think we need to talk to Scott about that.
I don't either.
Okay. Um, number six is, uh, the north, or let's see, the eastmost window on the north side, second floor, it actually opens into a jail cell, and it's been sealed up or covered up with, there's no glazing in it, they put something else in it.
They're sealing it right now.
And the, the sheriff doesn't want a window there, he wants it sealed up with brick. He wants it to go away.
Well, aesthetically, how does that make the building look when you start?
Better.
It does.
Yeah, well.
And we're gonna re, we're gonna reuse the brick that came off the chimney.
Right.
So it'll be, yeah.
So it ought to match.
We already got the brick.
It ought to match fairly close. This is a, I mean, it's a cost of five twenty-five.
Can't be that big of a deal.
That's getting rid of the one, not having to buy a window to go in there, and using those recycled bricks to put back up there, I think it'll be fine when we get done with it.
Now, is that, that's item six, right?
That's item six.
Yeah, what about item five?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed one.
Okay.
Item, I'll skip back to item five, so I can't count, and whatever. Um, item five, when they started getting ready to do the infill of the overhead doors, um, the contractor, or at the jail, the contractor went out and did some probing, because I've got where we're supposed to be attaching to the footing that's underneath there, and in reality, there's about three inches of concrete underneath there, that's it, there's no footing. There's a gap, and they went in and dug underneath it to try to verify, and it comes up to each side of the door, and the footing stopped.
It's not a continuous footing down that wall.
It wouldn't have been as, it wouldn't have been as, yeah, I, I don't ask me. I'm not, I'm not even gonna go there. It, it wouldn't have probably been as big of a deal if we had done it the way we started out with, with build a wall and put EFS on it, because you don't have the weight, but since we're doing the block backup and the brick, we got a lot of weight setting on top of it, so we need to have the footing.
You're gonna have to have a footing.
So it'll be a continuous footing, they'll dial into the existing footing, which will be good for the jail, 'cause it'll help tie all that together, so it doesn't move. So we've got a cost of, uh, twenty-three twenty, two thousand three hundred twenty dollars to put that footing in, and the rebar necessary to tie it all together and have continuous footings with rebar all the way around the building, so that's.
I think you're about gonna have that with the earthquakes and stuff.
I absolutely will. I had no clue that there was that much concrete there. I don't know why they would've stopped it, but I'm sure that's probably common things back when they built the building, but.
Money savings.
Yeah.
We don't need that.
We'll never need that.
And, and the last thing is, we did a, we took a material deduct, um, because we, during bidding, we were offered an equal, we looked at the product, this is, it's your roof panels, um, they go on there, and we determined that the roof panels were a equal to what we had specified, and this is, this is the roofer having, this is his panels or the ones that he deals with all the time, or we had speced him a panel that he was gonna have to buy from somebody and cost him more money. He gave us an offer to reduce the cost if we would consider using his panel, and I picked the center panel that you see there.
Okay.
And there's three panels there, the bottom one is just a flat, flat panel, which you get, you see a lot of oil canning, because you've got this long piece of metal, so you get a lot of that. I picked the one in the middle, 'cause it's got two ribs in it, which will cut out the majority of the oil canning. The one above it, you, you really see a lot of ripple to it. I think it, I don't know that it gets rid of the oil canning as much as just disguises it, because you can't see there all the ripples. So I went to the middle one, because of the panel that I picked, and the fact that we went to the alternate, we're able to pull thirty-five hundred dollars out of the job, so.
And we're not losing any quality, any, okay?
We looked at it as far as, uh, was it equal to what we had specified?
Okay, equal, or better, okay.
So, no, we're not losing anything on it, and this, this went all the way back to bidding, um, when we started that, and then it showed up again when we, when we got the cementals, so. So I think that's all the damage I've done to you today.
I hope the sheriff doesn't come back to us in two years and say, well, we need to put a door in there, because now we need to be able to load our, our prisoners without the public seeing them, because it, it's a flight of somebody getting shot, and then let's pull all that out.
Yeah.
And put doors in.
That can happen.
Yeah, I know it.
I'm sure.
I'm already hearing it.
I am sure that is why, I am sure that's why the doors are there today.
I think it is, too.
For a Sally port for them.
You know, and I, I don't know, I know we went ahead and did the brick on it, but I guarantee you, in a few years, we're gonna hear, we need a door, or we need a, some way to build on, to have access, to have covered when you load prisoners in that room.
They built the new Washington County, and it's got a full Sally port to it.
So these two, these two doors that we're gonna brick up, we know that there's footing underneath there.
The, the two overhead doors, that's the one, that's the one that we're putting the.
That's the one we're gonna put the footing in.
Yeah, 'cause we're gonna.
Both of those doors.
Originally, if you remember, we were just gonna put wood on, cover, and close them, you know?
Yeah, and then he wanted to brick.
And now he wanted them bricked, so we're putting the, we're putting cement, cement.
Now's the time, now's the time to make that decision.
What I'm getting at is, is, uh, two overhead doors and the walk-in door.
Right.
The walk-in door's already got foot.
The walk-in door will have a footing there.
Already.
Because that's short enough span and cost them too much to not.
To not do it, okay.
To do it. They just, I'm sure they probably thought, we'll pour enough concrete over top of it, but you can, you can walk out there, they've got a hole still over there, where you can see the edge of the concrete coming out of the door, and it's about three inches thick, which is surprising, driving cars on it, that it wouldn't have cracked at all pieces.
Yeah.
'Cause three inches is.
Does your roof maker that has this other roof, does he make him panels on site, or is he?
I don't know, I doubt very seriously they're made on site, they may be fabricated in a shop.
Okay, but it'll be something that if we need to get more repairs later, we can, okay?
Will, Will does the job, but I don't.
Okay, appreciate that.
I don't think that's an issue.
Well, I think we ought to approve all of them, except item four.
I'm gonna move to approve items one, two, three, five, six, and seven. Can I do that all in one motion?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Rock moves, has seconds to approve change orders number one for glass door in the amount of eleven hundred and sixty-three dollars for the county clerk's office. Change order two for the extension of the canopy at the jail, increase of eight hundred and ninety-two dollars. Change order number three to, for, to approve the jail drainage system, uh, increase of five thousand one hundred and three dollars. Change order number five for a footing, um, on the door infill at the jail for two thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. Change order number six for, uh, window number twenty-nine to be bricked with brick from the chimney, uh, at the cost of five hundred and twenty-five dollars, and acknowledge the deduct of the MRC panels of a decrease of three thousand five hundred dollars. All in favor?
Bob, Rock.
Aye.
Pass.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously.
Okay, so our numbers are gonna change since we took number four out.
Right, instead of fifty-six, you're gonna have about fifty-eight, five, roughly.
Fifty-eight, five, okay.
Roughly, um, that you're gonna have back in there, or still remaining in your contingency.
And we do have a couple items we're working on, I mean, we're not done yet.
You're gonna hit us again?
Oh, I don't think, I don't think we're gonna use it all, we have some. Well, the, the two things that I know's hanging out there is, we're talking with how we treat the exposed foundation in the front.
Of the jail.
Of the jail where we've torn out all the dirt and all that. We thought we had stone that went down further and it stopped. So we've got some rough concrete foundation and, and so they're giving us a price, priced either slurry coated or what we talked to them today is actually building a wall in front of it and dressing it up so that, and waterproofing it. That's all part of it. Which is not a lot of area. It's a pretty small area. There's a little piece on the north side of the, the main stairs, probably about this high and the width of that slope channel, and, and I'm more concerned about waterproofing that because nobody will ever really see it. The other side, when you walk up, you can see it where that planter was at, and, and there's a reasonable area. It's not giant area, but, and it's not gonna be big money. It's just a little money here to do that. The other thing that has been brought to our attention, I don't know whether that was during the owners' meeting, was the rail on the north side of the jail has rusted to where it's, it.
It's dangling.
It probably wouldn't be a good thing to leave it that way. Probably needs to be fixed anyway. That rail doesn't meet ADA. So we can look at doing a new rail that matches what we're doing in the rest of the.
Now, is this up the fire escape?
No, this is that back door on the north side.
Goes over their, their personal kitchen.
And, and we can do a rail that matches what we're doing everywhere else and get a price, and we're gonna get a price. We're gonna bring those back to you and then you guys can decide what you want to do.
That one rail is actually rusted through, so it's not even touching at the bottom, so.
So anyway, we're, we're gonna bring you a few things, but remember, we're bringing them here to discuss and you guys get to decide if you wanna do them, if you don't wanna do them. I'll tell you, if there's some really issues that we need to do, we have to do, we're trying to not bring a bunch of stuff that just because the subcontractor wants to do it, put money in his pocket, we're trying not to do that. And our first line comes to us, but then it's discussed in the owners' meeting, and we got rid of a whole list of stuff that our dirt guy wanted to do that we just said, no, I'm not gonna do that because if we'd done what he wanted, we'd have, we'd have foundation drain around the jail, but it would be relying on a sub-pipe to get it out, and I never wanna do that. That's the easiest way to flood a building. Because in the middle of a storm, what's the first thing that happens?
It goes down.
The door goes down, and then your sub-pipe doesn't work, so, you know, it doesn't, and you just don't have an option here. You're just so flat. On the next phase of it, if you guys wanna set a date, just let us know and we will be here whenever you guys want, want us to be here. And we can talk through that and we can get started on it, but you guys can.
Yeah, like Cindy said, we need to get through the first of the year and all that.
Just let us, let us know and we'll get it on our calendar. We'll come talk to you.
Alrighty.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else we can bother you with?
No, it's going well.
That was enough?
No, that's good. We just gotta remember, we don't all get all of our wants. We get our needs, we don't get ours.
And we brought it to you so that you could decide. I'm listening, but we're also sitting there going, nah, maybe not. I listen a little harder with the sheriff.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Let's see, we need a motion to go return to item T, right? Yes, item T.
I guess it's my turn, so I'll make a motion that we return up to item T.
I'll second that.
Uh, ten thirty-three has moved wrong, seconded to return to item T. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Wrong?
Aye.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. So we have the detention service agreement with SAC and Fox Nations. It is for, how much? Let's see if I can find.
And I started going, and I think it was, there was no change on that. On these others, I have them written on there.
Okay, let's see. This is Cleveland County.
Twenty-one eleven per day.
Twenty-one eleven per day. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Wrong move has seconded to approve the detention service agreement between SAC and Fox Nation in Grant County in the amount of twenty-one eleven per day. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Wrong?
Aye.
Pass?
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. Two of them to sign. The next one is Cleveland County Juvenile Detention.
And it, what, last year it was thirty dollars per day and it went up to thirty-five dollars.
I know they've got financial problems. That's with Canadian County. How about we charge in thirty-five? We're charging in thirty-five.
Yeah.
We charge in thirty-five.
Well, I think we ought to go up five dollars.
So, and there's only one original here. Do we have?
Yeah, let's see, but this one's, which one are we on?
This is, uh.
This is Cleveland.
Cleveland.
I make a motion to approve the juvenile detention contract with Cleveland County.
I'll second that.
Has moved, wrong, seconded to approve the Cleveland County Detention Service Contract between Cleveland County and Grant County in the amount of thirty-five dollars per day. Are you in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Wrong?
Aye.
Pass?
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously.
Is there just?
No, here's the second.
Oh, gotcha.
The next one is between Potawatomi County Juvenile Detention in Grant County in the amount of.
Thirty-five a day and it went from thirty to thirty-five as well.
Move to approve.
Second.
Wrong move has seconded to approve the detention contract between Potawatomi County Juvenile Detention in Grant County in the amount of thirty-five dollars per day. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Wrong?
Aye.
Pass?
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. Next one is between Texas County Juvenile Detention and Grant County in the amount of forty-one dollars per day.
Forty-one dollars a day, huh?
Mm-hmm. Do we have a motion to approve that?
I make a motion to approve.
I see.
Has moved, wrong, seconded to approve the detention service contract between Texas County Juvenile Detention in Grant County in the amount of forty-one dollars a day. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Wrong?
Aye.
Pass?
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. The one we really need that we don't have is the one we use, and that's down at Garfield County.
Okay, I'll check on that.
Do we have anybody? We don't have anybody, don't we, now, do we?
I don't think so, but that's the one we use, and we certainly need to make sure of the contract in place. Like, that's what we ran into last time. Not only were we having there, we didn't have contract.
Okay, I'll check on that.
Okay, this is task. This is for this thing that was last year, forty thousand. Payable one, quarterly payment, ten thousand.
Is this on X?
This is on X, yes. This is, this is the agreement that, we've had it for several years. Robin uses it to provide, to help with her valuation of oil and gas and things like that. And it's the same as it was last year. It's forty thousand payable in quarterly estimates.
I move to approve the contract for service.
I'll second that motion.
Wrong move has seconded to approve the task contract for service with the assessor's office for fiscal year nineteen in the amount of forty thousand dollars pay, a full and ten thousand dollar quarterly es- payments. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Wrong?
Aye.
Pass?
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. Now, what is this?
That's the OSU CT, uh, uh, Local Government Train of OSU Service Agreement for Assessor's Office through CLGT. I guess, oh, let's see.
To maintain our training.
CCAP Contract Agreement.
Oh, it's for their software for fifteen hundred, for, let's see, fifteen hundred dollars. Have, is this new? Have we ever done this before?
I don't know that we ever done that before.
Is it, yeah, yes, please. This might have been something with that legislation that just passed this year, but, um, there was some legislation on something for them in the past.
Hello? Uh, are you available to come into the board meeting?
Yeah, I suppose so.
Okay, we'll see you in a minute. Thank you.
Okay, what do I need to bring?
Well, we, they were just, uh, we're talking on the OSU Service Agreement and they just kinda wanted some clarification on that.
Okay, so that was last year. I'll be there in a second.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, bye.
Bye.
Can I ask something? Did, did you guys do P and Q with the budget maker?
No.
Okay, I'm good.
It's up there, yeah.
It's upstairs.
Did I sleep?
No, I took it up to Stevie, but he hasn't brought it back to me yet.
Oh, okay.
I got it from Buddy. I didn't get it from Buddy until Friday, so, or Thursday, I mean, in the mail.
Good morning.
Good morning. They're just, they didn't remember having that last year.
I've slept since last year.
I hear ya.
Bring us up to date what this is. I, I just don't remember.
Okay, a couple of years ago, OSU had to start charging us for our used-to-be-free system, and so it's fifteen hundred a year now. So we take the first half out of sixteen-two and the second half of the payment, which is seven fifty payments apiece, out of seventeen-two.
And what was the legislation that just passed this year on your assessor deal? That something that, and that's upgrading your camera, right?
Right.
Bring me up, I, I don't, well, wait a minute, that's not on our agenda. We probably can't talk about that, but, yeah, put that on there. I can't remember what that was, but I'd like to be updated on what that was, maybe next week.
Yeah, because I don't have a whole lot of information on it yet. It's not gonna take effect until two thousand nineteen, so we'll learn more.
Okay, so this is for seven hundred and fifty dollars this year?
Fifteen hundred dollars. She pays it two payments.
Two payments.
But it was two years ago. I remember that now that you've mentioned it. They've always done it for free and two years ago, they had to have money and this was the way they generated it. I remember now. Thank you for that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Was it fifteen hundred dollars this year?
Uh-huh, yeah, but it, yes, but she pays it in two halves. She pays seven hundred and fifty out of her revow and seven hundred and fifty out of her assessor's account.
Okay.
So.
I make a motion to approve that OSU contract for the assessor's office for twenty eighteen, nineteen.
I see.
For fifteen hundred dollars.
I see.
Has moved, wrong, seconds to approve the OSU Service Agreement for the Assessor's Office through CLGT for fifteen hundred dollars for fiscal year nineteen. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Wrong?
Aye.
Pass?
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. Thank you.
You betcha.
Was there questions on the other one, or was it good, the task?
It was good.
Yes, yeah, no.
I'll, I'll bring copies up. I'll get you copies afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
Bill Coates still does this, doesn't he?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, I need to call him. I got Beaver problems again, so.
They're destructive little cars, aren't they?
Back up on our roads and flood our roads is what they do, so. Um, item Z is the Cooperative Agreement with USDA Wildlife Services for our Predator Rodent Services for FY nineteen. Same as last year, twenty-four hundred dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Wrong moves has seconds to approve the Cooperative Agreement with USDA Wildlife Services for Predator and Rodent Services for FY nineteen for twenty-four hundred dollars. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Wrong?
Aye.
Pass?
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously.
And this was brought to me by Stephen Young and asked if he placed on the agenda the next item. Oh, no, I'm sorry, that's not the next item.
We're not drinking yet.
Yeah. You think it was the one, I don't know what item we're on.
Would you get that to Cindy, Bobbit? Brenda just brought it in. Something to do with problems.
Okay.
Oh.
The salary revision per Senate Bill eleven thirty regarding the revision of the Oklahoma State Election Board salaries effective May first, yes, this is FYI.
Okay.
Um, I forgot to print it out. Let me, let me look. I've gotten on my email that she sent it to me here.
Is that that one you sent me?
Yes.
I think I have it here somewhere.
Do ya? I'm just gonna bring you guys up to date on what that was.
And I started, I think I have it laying on my desk in here, but.
So they're raising what the state?
Yes, actually, it's, here it is. Okay, here it is. The, the, they voted to give, you know, all state employees got a raise, so that includes the election board. So for twenty nineteen, the salary is going to go to two thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Currently, we're paying one thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. So in the FY nineteen budget, she will have two months that she has to increase that, that salary. In twenty twenty-three, the wages are also going up, but I don't, they don't seem to have that figure available to know what that is at this point. So that is just FYI, so as we get ready to prepare our budget. Is there anything else on that we need?
No, I mean, I'll prepare the stuff and then I'll kind of, uh, just get it to you.
So you say what we're paying now is eleven eighty-eight or twenty-one?
We're paying eighteen, we are, currently, we are paying eighteen eighty-eight ninety-seven. If you count all of our benefits, we're paying, you know, twenty-nine hundred or something, but just the cash, just the cash part.
Yeah.
And so just the cash part's gonna go up to twenty-one ninety-one, twenty-five, but when you increase the cash part, that means our FICA goes up, that means our matching retirement goes up. I mean, it's not just the cash part.
And actually, the eighteen eighty-eight ninety-seven, um, there's a twenty, that twenty-five dollar that's on that claim form, I can show you. That's actually in, so we're actually paying right now like, uh, one thousand nine hundred and eighteen ninety-seven?
We're paying, that's on the total, Cindy.
Oh, okay.
That, that would be on cash.
Oh, the bottom line is the.
Yeah, not the bottom. Yeah, because we, you put your cash up here and then we have so much for FICA and so much for retirement and health insurance.
So the eighteen is what's the bottom, like the net?
Right, yeah, the, the twenty-five fifty is what we get reimbursed. We actually paying like twenty-nine hundred. We're only getting reimbursed like twenty-five. So that deal hadn't been a big deal, that twenty-five dollar deal, because we're not getting paid for it anyway.
Right, right.
Got it, okay. Okay. That was just to let you know what was going on. Okay, let's see, we did, so that was A, we've done B, B. And we're down to C, 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 C?
C, C.
Yeah, county recognition one. Okay, general store. And Stephen brought you down this?
Yes.
And what are we supposed to do on this? Is this just an FYI or we need to act?
You have to act on it.
We have to act on it, okay. There.
I'm thinking on.
You have twenty days to respond. Do not write in this section, city, county, use, and enforce the title.
I hear where you signed, but, yeah.
You have twenty days to respond. Please complete the following and submit a notarized copy of this page to ABLE Commission.
It's for Dollar General.
They're applying for licenses.
Right, sell beer, the six-point-two beer.
Okay, so they have applied previously now. So they're going to an ongoing business.
Imagine we'll be getting a lot of those.
Well, we done two of them already.
No, we have no, no.
Not that I'm aware of.
No, they, they came and talked to us verbally, but they never did the paperwork.
Okay, well, I seen in the paper where the bar up to Manchester and the bar down at Palm Creek applied for a license.
They need to be bringing this to us, right?
Or, or maybe it's being processed.
For them to send to us.
It might be a different deal if it's by the.
Letter the influx city on the back, or did it come from ABLE Commission, or did the, this is the DA's office and it came out?
Yeah, this is the ABLE Commission.
Yeah, this is no, no, uh.
Oh, because it came from the DA's, Iowa State Influx.
Yeah, okay, here's the, yeah, okay, yeah, I went to the, I went to the DA's office right there. Okay, the board of commissioners shall make rapid conditions on whether or whether or not the applicant should be issued a license by the ABLE Commission within twenty days after the date of the copies of the application were made.
And so that ABLE Commission mail, Dollar General. And so that's ABLE Commission mail, Dollar General did provide that.
Yeah, and it's weird because there's, there's a whole bunch of owner information going on through here, it's...
Bet we'll be getting a bunch of those.
Stephen, I thought I seen this paperwork before for, uh, the bar, Manchester, and then, maybe it was in the paper?
There's two of them here, uh, Max, there's two of them here that they're asking. One of them is, they're both the Dollar General store, but for some reason, oh, is one for maybe it's a liquor or wine?
And they're probably gonna say a wine.
Okay, one's probably, I guess, one for wine.
I think you did see it in the paper. It looked like it was a form.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, I read it, and, uh, see, this deal, our here says interim license fees, there's wine and spirits, fifty-five hundred, beer seventeen fifty, retail beer seven fifty, and retail wine twelve fifty.
Okay, so do they have like different, like this one has, uh, I'm trying to figure out what we've got too. Can you see any difference, or is it just a copy of the same thing? Yeah, but, see, those have a different name on them. That front, front one you have right there has a different name than this one.
And I noticed the two that you and Patty were looking at, the number of the top are the same.
Those two are the same.
But the signatures are different.
Yeah, but the signatures are different.
Dollar General store is seventeen oh eighteen in Grant County, at two eighteen North First.
I bet you're right, I bet it's one for beer and one for...
For something else.
For something else.
And see, it says corporation and it's, uh, Dogland Corp. LLC.
Yeah, yeah, but then on the email, if you look at it, it's something that, uh, oh, here. If you look at this and it's, uh, taxpayer license at DollarGeneral.com. So that's the only reason.
Well, there's, see, this number is the same as here.
This is a corporation, that's your limited liability company.
The management is one company and the Dollar General is another.
Maybe that's, maybe that's...
It's like a holding company.
Yeah, Dollar General and Dogland Corp., whatever is the liability.
They have to go through.
Yeah.
And then they probably like have individual...
I mean, there's no reason to deny that.
I don't either.
Did he seem a little anxious?
But I was thinking their liability insurance is like a million dollars, and I saw someone told me that they didn't feel...
Except that they won't give me a free bottle of wine.
Like shine off, she give me a free bottle of wine.
That would be would, yeah, no.
Well, that was this fifty-five hundred dollar license that they was talking about. They said they didn't think that they could, you know. They come to us and want us to change the...
And we're voting on it and now they're not gonna do it.
I know.
The liquor, the little beer store in Renfro closed.
It did?
Yeah, liquor, well, my liquor store, little beer joint.
Yeah.
It closed.
Another one in Waukidi closed.
Oh, it did?
Yeah. Now, it closed a month ago.
Oh, after they were up here.
Yeah, right, right after.
Max has the paper.
Are we acknowledging, or are we moving to?
We have to, we have to, it says we have to approve. Right here, the statute, Oklahoma statute says we have to, we have the right to approve or disapprove. Shall make recommendations, so we recor, so the motion should be, I either recommend or I do not recommend the applicant be licensed by the ABLE Commission.
Whose turn is it?
Not mine.
I, I move to approve both applications.
Make recommendations, okay. Uh, do you second?
I'll second.
Okay. Ronk moved, Hess seconded, to make a recommendation that Dollar General store and that grown, whatever they were.
Yeah.
Uh, what is it?
The, the corporation and the LLC.
Yeah, the LLC. Uh, recommend that the application should be issued and licensed by the ABLE Commission.
Yes.
All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Ronk?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously. That's tough.
Okay.
The next will be easier.
All right.
So...
So now you get to fill that out.
I'm just gonna sign it and someone else can fill it out. We're all gonna sign.
Just put an X right there.
Overseas beer.
Okay. But I would use the verb, very, that's what I read off there, on the motion.
Okay.
But I, I guess that's my question, is are we gonna see like Jiffy Tript and...
Yeah, right. I think you're right. We will be seeing all, anybody that's selling, yeah.
Well, and there was other regulations that went along with that too. I was told that your bartenders have to go and have a license now.
Mm-hmm.
I think your bartenders do.
Yes.
Yeah, your bartenders.
So if you have somebody, you're not gonna get just anybody to go tend the bar now.
Right, but it's always been that way when you have, well, I guess on beer you didn't have to, but now they will, any bar will have to have a license. But you can still cash and carry and it doesn't have to be...
Even if you're catering an event, you're gonna have to do that.
That's the weird thing, someone that's checking out, could be sixteen, and can they check you out and sell it to you?
I...
I don't know.
Or do they have...
I don't think so.
That'd be eighteen.
I mean, yeah. So if you're a Jiffy Tript...
Might have to be twenty-one.
I bet it's twenty-one.
They're gonna have to be twenty-one to be able to sell it.
That's gonna be a hard deal for some stores though, because they might have eighteen, nineteen, twenty-year-olds that work the cash registers.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Laying three for all alcohol.
Yeah.
Well, it might be, you're right.
That's exactly right.
Ten items are less.
That's right. Okay, item DD, uh, Crossland Construction Change Order O2 and or Payment Application Number Eleven, Grant County, is that what Stephen's supposed to come down to?
Well, I know Pat.
Yeah, um, yeah, I talked to Stephen.
Okay.
And after getting to the bottom of it, we, okay, this is all the kitchen equipment, and if, and if you'll go back in time with me, we all had the discussion about the kitchen equipment. And I remember I wasn't so hip on all the, the, uh, commercial kitchen equipment, and I think you two both kinda were. Do I remember that right?
Yeah, that may be. I, I don't remember for sure.
So we, we voted and, and, and we did pass it to, to let the fair board purchase that stuff. They went ahead and gave Crossland the go-ahead. Everything got handled with the exception of Crossland didn't get us a change order for that, to the tune of forty-some thousand dollars for the kitchen equipment. The, after the fair board had dwindled that down from almost sixty thousand.
Okay, here's the kitchen equipment. It says scheduled value fifty-seven thousand, and this period, what they're asking for on this one is thirty-six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars on this change order, with a balance to finish it at twenty-one thousand. So they're asking us to pay on this change order number, whatever it is.
Two, I think, or eleven.
Change order number...
Application number one.
Apple eleven.
Yeah.
And they're asking for kitchen, but also, the problem I see included in here is they've got other stuff that's not kitchen equipment. They've got, they've got, um, some electrical stuff, electrical stuff, and they got some plumbing, and I don't know, maybe...
That's, and that's all fine, but that was all scheduled work to be done anyway, to get them to that certain percentage point to the contract of getting done. Does that make sense to you?
So it should have been paid for out of the regular contract in the, in the order.
It should not have shown up on this change order.
It shouldn't have showed up on the change order, that's what I'm saying.
If it's a normal work, it wouldn't show up on their change order. They're showing...
The, the, okay, but some of that is in, is in conjunction with that kitchen equipment being purchased. Like, you're not gonna have a sink unless you have the ability to get water to it, or heated water to it, or...
Well, yeah, but we already had that, unless they're saying, oh, we had a three-inch line and now we need a six-inch line. That's a change. But, but the regular deal, when you laid it out, we knew it was gonna have a kitchen sink, you knew you had to have a plumbing run to it. The problem, the change is, is, oh, we thought we could get by with a, a half-inch line and now we need a one-inch line. That's a change, but it should not, that, that, I just, oh, I don't know, it's confusing to me, but, whatever you guys think.
It's... Regardless, I mean, we, we agreed that this stuff needed to be done. And, and Stephen told me, said, y'all are gonna get wrote, wrote up on it by the auditor. But he said, also, it's gonna cost a lot more money if somebody goes and reposes that stuff and then you want it, you want it back. It's gonna cost almost...
So my question is, how, where, where'd the ball, just so it doesn't have to be...
The ball got dropped by, by also not doing their, their deal.
Okay, that's, that's just, that's, I just wanna make sure.
We, we did all our...
Right in the minutes.
And, and he kinda got after me, and I said, well, okay, Stephen, whose job is it to get us this stuff? Is it ours, ours to go chase it down? And he said, well, no, it's probably the fair boards, and I said, well, I don't know that that's true either. I said, that's why we hire a construction manager.
It's really our construction manager to chase it down. That's really, that's why we hire them is to do those things.
Exactly.
You know, he can, they're supposed to go, just like these gentlemen that sit here today. They're coming here, they haven't done anything. They're coming here and say, do you want it or do you not?
Yeah, I, I completely agree.
Three hours to come and tell and ask you that.
Completely agree. I, I, no, you're preaching to the choir there.
I know, so, all right, so...
I, but all that being said, I mean, I, I think this is something we asked for. Um, it would be a complete waste of taxpayer money if we didn't approve this. May not be right now, but at, at some point it's gonna be.
I think that we ought to go ahead and pay that PO with the fact that we stayed in there, that it wasn't handled properly. We're gonna get wrote up on it, but it wasn't handled properly by our construction manager versus our...
And, and, yeah, and Pat, you're assuring us as a board that these items were definitely change orders in reference to the kitchen equipment.
To the best of my knowledge, yes. I'm, I'm not gonna...
Swear on the Bible?
Swear on the Bible, but...
Well, just the best of your knowledge, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I want that included in my motion, that we approve that with the statement that we, it wasn't properly encumbered to us. We're gonna get written up over it because we visited with the DA and that's what he said, so the, the auditors are gonna point that out. But, we also know now that it should have been encumbered differently, handled differently.
By our construction manager.
By our construction manager. But we owe the money, I don't wanna cost the county more money, I wanna go ahead and pay it. We've got the equipment in place and continue forward from there. We'll take a black eye for it, but that's all we can do.
I second that motion.
Hess moved, Ronk seconded, to accept the Crossland Construction Change Order O2 and Payment of Number Eleven for the Grant County Expo Center, all for kitchen equipment.
And note that it...
And note, and make the note that it, uh, our construction manager did not get the paperwork followed in proper procedure, or where the board had agreed that the kitchen equipment was to be done. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Ronk?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously. Okay. Ee-e.
Okay, and, and I'm not trying to get anyone in trouble, but Stephen's the one who told me to put this on the agenda too. I just, 'cause we need to acknowledge, or I don't know, do I need to call him and have him come down?
If he asked for it to be on the agenda, let him come down.
Well, my thought, the building, the building is not in our possession, so why are we doing that?
Hi, it's Cindy and the board. Can you come down to talk about, or do you wanna, okay?
No, it'd be easier for me to come down.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye. Oh, did you have, could you by chance, did you have a chance to look at that quick one on, uh, Buddy, on the budget maker?
I did, I'm having so much computer problems, I couldn't do anything else, so...
Okay. If you, all right, thank you.
I'll bring him with me.
Okay, thank you, bye. Okay.
How much was Crossland's change money?
The change order that they requested, forty-two thousand seven eleven ninety-one.
Okay.
And it's, it's Payment Application Number Eleven, but the change order they failed to get through was number two.
That's the one, I just wanted to make sure we had the email, yeah.
And that's the only invoice that you have, isn't it?
From Crossland?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
It's probably, or is all those pre-land deals going on?
I haven't seen anything else on that.
Um, so, do you have a purchase order?
No, uh, yes, we do have a purchase order.
We can sign that.
Okay, let me have her bring it back in.
I know Mr. Teff would love to hear that.
Yeah. Hello? Hello, um, do you have that PO, uh, for Crossland Construction? At forty-two thousand? If, if you could bring that in, they went ahead and approved to pay that.
Okay, I'll, I'll see if I send my box, I'll look for it.
Okay, thank you. These are ready to, oh, yeah.
As far as the auditors go, if Crossland didn't give it to you, then you couldn't have done it, so, I mean...
I'm making a motion, we're taking a five-minute recess.
I second that.
At, at eleven oh six, we're going to Hess move, Ronk seconds, to take a five-minute recess. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Ronk?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried unanimously. You put us on the list.
I know what your motive was.
Oh, and here he comes.
We're taking, we're in a short recess.
Okay. Thank you. No.
It should be unlocked.
No, it's, I mean, my whole day is just... Worked all yesterday on my birthday.
Oh, hey, happy birthday yesterday.
How old were you?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four.
It ain't so bad, is it?
I don't know, I like, you know, twelve and thirteen better.
Oh, my lord. Okay.
That's when you had no responsibility, though.
Yeah, well, I mean, you could, you could drink all the, the root beer you wanted until you got sick and threw up all over everything and...
Maybe at your house.
You still can.
No, I, I, I don't like root beer anymore 'cause I drank so much of it. It's not my favorite anymore.
Sounds like it's fixing to get noisy around here really fast. With the windows and the roof and...
Yeah.
The next...
Windows especially.
But think how nice it'll be once it's done.
It already looks better.
Good boy, it does. You're right, you're absolutely right.
It is nice. Anybody complain, I don't listen to them, 'cause it's...
Getting rid of that atrium was, uh, smart, but...
Isn't it nice to not have it?
Did you leave it on? Max?
It's not heavy odor to open and go out through it. It's just, it's just...
Was there an odor?
Yeah. It smelled like fish every time I walked through there.
Okay, I didn't even notice, I guess. What's that? It's just so skinny and you're all...
Yeah. Stephen, have you had any time to look at that deal from John Deere for me?
The deal from John Deere?
The deal where I had my Trico repaired and we went over the amount. We did not get a blanket. When we found out it was more than that, I told Donna to get a blanket. She says, I didn't tell her, but I, in positive, I did. We talked about it. She remembers talking about it. But anyway, we got the bill and it was fifteen thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars. And we had gotten a P O for five thousand dollars, but that was when we first thought it was gonna take a, a day and a half to fix. I know you told me we was gonna get, we're gonna get red flagged on it. I, I understand. But I didn't know-
Is it on the agenda for today?
No, it's not, it's not. I, I just was inquiring you, I, I called up there earlier and you was, was somebody-
We're probably gonna have to do the same thing we're gonna have to do with the fair board stuff, so.
Okay. Want me to go get Cindy?
Yeah, we've got four, she got one minute. She'd be late, she'd be late.
Yeah.
She'd be late, we said five minutes. She'd be late, 'cause it's five, it's eleven now.
I, I had to have some, I had to have a break.
I hear ya.
She's emailing to the newspaper.
I'm headed social, getting it all done, then she'll be right back over.
We got through this big deal a lot faster than what I thought. Yeah. Uh, well, hopefully get out of here by three. Cindy, how'd you wheat do?
Well, I haven't seen my tickets, I think we have a mixed bag. I think we had some not so good wheat and we had some surprisingly good wheat.
Really?
We've got a very mixed bag.
My uncle was driving a truck for an old boy that's cutting seventy bushel, uh, wheat.
Really?
Yes.
He's busy then.
He's busy. I make a motion, we come out of recess.
I second that.
At eleven thirteen, Hess moves, wrong seconds, to come out of recess. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Wrong?
Aye.
Uh, Hess?
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously. We are down to item E E. Um, phone fax quotes under title six-two-one for purchase and labor performed at Grant County Expo Center, Grant County Care Board.
Um, I just, it was called our attention, or they, uh, had called to get a P O for Tef Plumbing. Um, for fifty-nine hundred dollars for storm drainage and, um, we had told them that, you know, our office told them that that needed to have gone out for bid. Um, I don't really know too much about it, whether they'd already had it done, or, or I just know that proper procedure wasn't followed.
Well, that's, that's something, I mean, that building has not been officially released, you know, and paid in full and everything. That's a, that's a, that's a drainage thing like guttering type deal. The spouts from the guttering aren't shooting the water far enough away from the building. That's something that needs to be done with our architect and the construction manager, for one thing. I'm, I'm not happy with it.
Have they start, I mean, I don't know.
No.
Well, that would, that would be through our contractor, that wouldn't be-
Exactly, exactly.
Wouldn't be a Grant County to Tef Plumbing, we wouldn't have to bid, but it would be a bad off.
But I know that, that-
Yeah, and-
They were trying to encumber a P O to Tef Plumbing.
Well, and that's for a gas line, um-
But then they did bring that in to me, that was, I get, or I've got two copies, I don't know why two-
That's for a gas line to, uh, to a tankless heater.
Fifty-nine hundred for storm drainage, thirty feet is going to de-something. Supplied by, oh, be supplied, to be, thirty foot is to be supplied by owner, do not exceed. Um, who, who's bidding this? Grant County District Three is taking phone calls?
Well, I just showed you the template of what I did.
I say he probably just got the floor from you and then-
So, I, I, I think this is an, an on-issue issue. We, we don't need to do any of this until the buil-, the building's ours, in my mind. And then at that point, I'll-
Yeah, if something-
I'll have them do that.
Go through the process?
Yeah.
Okay, so, they haven't done anything, we just don't need to encumber a P O and explain to them? Do, do you want me to call and visit with them, or will you visit with them?
Yeah, I will.
Okay.
Who was, who was it that called?
I think it was Tim.
Okay, yeah, I'll touch Tim.
But we've decided all of the boots are gonna go through their, her office anyway. We're not gonna do them ourselves.
Right, right, so, anyway.
Okay.
We'll get it sent over.
Okay, so, so Stephen, that was a-
All for now.
Are you ready to just tell us what to do?
About-
No, I was just making the scene, because that wasn't properly done, so, I mean, obviously, we couldn't act on it anyway, so.
And on the other deal, that's the one that I came and talked to you about earlier, uh, last week. And I relayed the message, you know, you said you'd probably get wrote up on it, but, well, I mean-
Oh, we're down to F F, okay, F F. Uh, no action, uh, no action on E E. Uh, it's a mute issue because that work has not been done and it cannot be done till the building's released.
Okay.
Okay, uh, and the proper bidding procedure needs to be explained to them. Now we're down to F F, phone quotes for hauling at general purposes District Three, that's where we're at.
Phone quotes for, what's this all about?
I don't know.
The, the rock hauling.
Okay.
Um, because we've had some P Os come through that have not gone through the phone fax quote. And it's my understanding, and, and tell me if I'm wrong, that it, but I did visit with some other county clerks as well. That, that at this point, all of the hauling has to go out for phone fax quote. And I'll be honest with you, I just think really Julian doesn't, I, I, nothing against your men, but I just think he doesn't understand all the paperwork he needs to do.
So, who, who's he paying, can you give us that?
I think it was, um-
I, I, I had H and K do some.
Yeah, I think it was the H and K.
Yeah, yeah. I was just, I was just, I was just loading some backhaul grain trucks.
Has to be bid.
Well, I thought, I was under the impression under five thousand dollars. That it could be negotiated without going out for-
Yeah, that, that five thousand dollar amount is the activity that you would, that everybody would have with that vendor for the calendar, that physical year. So, I mean, if you're hauling multiple times.
Well, yeah, I mean, we're talking a hundred and seventy-five dollars a load. And, and-
But I'm just-
And I'm, I'm done with that, and, and I don't even think it eclipsed a thousand dollars.
I just know with me talking to other county clerks, and I even had one of them call, like it was a larger county. And, and then I talked to some that were smaller counties and they just said, on hauling, it definitely, all hauling goes out for bid. Now, November first, that cha-, there will be the change order, you can go out for the six-month bid on labor. Is that going to include, I would then that one?
We could do that, yeah.
Then.
That's-
I mean, I just wanted to, I'm not trying to stir, I just want, I think clarity is good and, and we note that we had an issue. And we realize that and we're acknowledging we had an issue and we won't do it again, you know? That's my, that's all I'm asking for, is just-
And, and also on the bidding, you ha-, if, if someone's asked to be put on our bid list, you have to call them and solicit a bid and noted. So we've got, you can't just pick three at random, because if you, we've got vendors that come up here and says, every time you bid rock haul, I want on that.
Well, that's, that's fine, if I ha-, if I have that list, I'll, I'll be more than happy, but I'd-
You gotta call the purchasing agent, if they have a list. Every time you bid something, that's the first thing y'all be doing is calling, saying, who's on the bid list before you ever make a bid.
Well, and I will say this, and I want it in the minutes, that legislation needs to be changed. Because if we're gonna be financially responsible with, with taxpayer money, we need to be able to do stuff like that. I, I was getting, I was getting rock hauled for about the same price that I could do it myself.
Yeah.
And, and, and both people, on each side of me, know how just unheard of that is.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, they make it hard for you to save the tax, at times, the taxpayer money, just because of the procedure that you have to go through to make it happen.
Right, and, and if somebody calls you and says, I got, I've got three trucks sitting here and need to go your way. What's a, what's a responsible person supposed to say if you've got the money to do it?
Yeah, I agree.
So, please put that in the minutes.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, until we get legislation changed, though.
Yep.
We have to follow their rules, so. Alright, so, and I know we're working on the, trying to get a cheat sheet on bidding, so it'll be better.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's always been that it goes through the purchasing agent. I think that over time, we just kind of try to help out and do our, get things lined out.
Beforehand.
Beforehand, try to give it to you, so, but I think it really all needs to go through your office, so, anything that's bid, so. Alright, Stephen, um, I think that's all we need from you.
The, I mean, did we not put the, um, stuff on for the fair board? The-
Are you talking about the change order stuff?
Yes.
Yeah, item D D. That's what I was saying, I, I relayed what you did told me last week.
Well, um, so, my understanding is, is that, um, the change order was authorized by the, um, building, the-
Construction manager.
Construction manager. Um, looks like it's forty-two thousand seven hundred eleven and ninety-one cents. And, uh, the con-, the, the change order did not go through, um,
The commissioner.
The commissioners before, uh, it was authorized. Uh, my understanding is that, uh, we all signed a contract that the contract stated that all change orders have to come to the county commissioners. Um, so, you potentially, you have a, a reach of contract, um, with damages. Um, because, you know, um, there was no authority to perform the work, they just went on ahead and performed the work. Um, the flip side to that is, I mean, I don't know how the county's harmed by that. Uh, I guess the money's available to pay those. Uh, but nobody followed the, the, the contract. Um, so what we've done before is, um, you know, prepared an affidavit stating that, uh, you know, we received services for which, um, recompenses due, and that's some additional work that we have to do to, to, to do that. And that's probably the same process we're gonna have to do for the John Deere, get John Deere paid. These are vendors that we have to do business with, um, and, you know, if we don't pay them, you know, we won't be able to do business with them again. So, I mean, we're gonna have to pay, pay that, uh, but we're gonna have to acknowledge that through an affidavit process. So, I can prepare an affidavit for both the John Deere and this, uh, fair board. Um, and get those, uh, to Cindy, hopefully by Friday, so she can put them on the agenda for next week. And then just run them through again. Um, but, yeah, the auditors aren't gonna be happy with you at all.
Yeah, hold that, so that's what we call that.
And so, I mean, this seems to be a continuing issue here, and I don't know why all of a sudden, you know, it's become a repeat issue. I don't know, I don't, I don't know what's broken. Uh, we didn't, we didn't have, it was, and all of a sudden, we're having a lot of issues with people, um, authorizing work for which, you know, didn't run through the proper procedures. I don't know how to fix it. So, I'll, I'll go ahead and prepare the two affidavits, um, I'll go from there.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Do you have the invoice and stuff for the John Deere stuff?
Cindy does. It was sent to her office.
I, I need a copy of that, so I can prepare the affidavit.
I'll show the house, right?
Yeah, I'll show the house.
So, um, on item D D up there on that, uh, make sure that this, all those comments from him, I'll go down to I D M D, that, uh, he will prepare affidavits to get those paid.
Do we, do we need to withdraw our motion to go ahead and pay that?
Uh, I would imagine so.
Until Stephen gets that. I make a motion that I withdraw my motion, uh, on item D D for the approval of the payment application for number eleven.
Second.
Okay. Hess moves, wrong second to withdraw his motion on D D to, um, accept the, the change order and the payment application of item eleven. All in favor?
Bobbit?
Aye.
Wrong?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All eyes motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Stephen.
I'll get those affidavits prepared.
That, that was the same thing I talked to you about with, with with the John Deere.
Okay.
And so, I appreciate that, I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You need a motion to go back, back there.
Well, we're-
Wait, wait, I'll, I'll have to do this. We need to figure that, Cindy, because I think it's our statute.
Our state statute.
Our public charge, so we need to figure that out before we do that. So, let's, let's run that, let's make sure we have that right anyway.
Okay, can I have a copy?
Yeah, you have, we can share.
Okay, so, oh, because there's only a skip.
Yeah, there's only a certain amount, I mean, it doesn't matter, it can only be, that's no reason you need-
Or Bodie Carol's deal.
That's project assessment, I mean, and that might be awarded, I haven't scanned that email.
Okay, okay, alright, thank you.
Alright. We are down to road crossings, do we have any road crossings?
None.
New business, Cindy Pratt, do we have any of those?
Um, it was just called to my attention that we had a bid from a six-month bid that did not get out of the, uh, full or so.
Was it received timely?
Mm-hmm.
It was received timely, then we need to include it in our-
So, I, if, if I-
It has to be-
I'll put it into the tabulations and then I'll resend the tabulations back out to you.
Let the, let us reflect that, uh, that, uh, we received, and we have not, and we'll need to, after you do that, we need to accept that, the tabulations on our agenda.
Yes.
Yes, yes, I thought, that's what I'm gonna give you all kinds of looks.
Yeah, I like the new, I like the new format, it's much easier. Who was that, by the way?
You in the concrete?
Yeah, yeah, me too.
Was discovered indoor by deputy on six eighteen here, where I'm part of clerk's office.
Okay, very good, keep that within, alrighty. Do you have any new business, Pat?
I have.
No.
I haven't.
No, no, no. None, none, none. Commissioners comments, uh, we're gonna start with you, Max.
Gama Two Bridge Floor is bored up there west of, uh, Gibbon last week. Everything turned out real well. We have to put the approaches up to them, but, uh, we are, we're mowing and grading and trying to fix the culverts. We had several culverts go down this harvest. Uh, we had some, uh, pipeline fall in where they bored three or four years ago when they put it, or five years ago possibly, when they put a twenty-four inch pipeline across the road. Thing fell in eighteen inches deep.
Ooh.
And, uh, we contacted the company because they always, they don't want you to do anything over their pipelines unless you contact them. Uh, we couldn't keep the signs up. We was out there at midnight, put the signs back up. And the next morning when I was out there at seven fi, oh, five, the signs were down again, so. We put, uh, I called the company again and told them that we was having trouble and they said, go ahead and do whatever I needed to do to fix the road. So we did.
And bill them?
Well, I haven't done that yet, but.
Time and time again, that's part of it. Yeah, that's right. As I say, I think that's in our, our road use, our road crossings, so it's up to them to maintain it and I would, I'd bill them for my time going out there and putting up all those barricades, you know, I would.
Yeah, well, I, uh, I will pursue that some more then, but, uh, really harvest is about over with in my area. Uh, if you had no till, there was some good no till wheat. Uh, most of the wheat didn't average, but five to fifteen up our way. There was some thirty, forty bushel wheat, but not very, very little of it. We have a CED meeting over to Alva Wednesday. Have a copy of the agenda. Looks like a rather lengthy agenda, uh, for it, item twenty-nine. Uh, our meetings down at Oklahoma City has gotten moved back, uh, they're supposed to be next week, uh, on Wednesday, but they got moved back to Thursday, so.
That's CED as well?
That's statewide CED board, yeah, has been moved from, uh.
Rescheduled to Thursday?
Yeah, to Thursday.
Echo four, Echo six F.
That's next week.
Yeah, that's next week.
That's all I have.
We're, we're busy grading and mowing and hauling and all that kind of stuff too. Nothing really new, just, just keeping it going. Seems like I'm gonna have a, another influx of vacation time around the Fourth of July, so we're trying to hurry up and get stuff done. Um, with that contract being signed today, I, I look to, uh, get started on constructing bridges tomorrow. We're doing a little dressing up on the banks of the creek right now. I've got a CDE SA meeting tomorrow in Ena and, uh, I was planning on going to the CED meeting Wednesday at Alva. That's all I got.
All right. Well, last week we had Flag Day where our four H, our senior four Hers, our sixth, our six officers, uh, did the flag retirement. And then there was about another six, uh, four Hers that did the reception. It was very, very nice. Um, they retired a hundred and eighty-eight flags. Um, we had some veterans there. Um, Representative John Piper was there. Um, it was, it was well attended. I, I think there was probably forty people there. Um, one veteran was pretty emotional on, you know, that got to participate and put the flags in the fire. It was, it was really nice. Um, I would like to see consideration, um, that since the Board of County Commissioners was working in conjunctions through NACO collecting those flags, that, you know, every year the four H has a, a four H banquet and I would like to have Board of County Commissioners, um, maybe buy a little pen with a, a flag on it or something to recognize them for their work, citizenship, that they'll probably be, for a special citizenship award or something. I think it'd be pretty nice where we can, we can, we can put that on our agenda for discussion formally, but just thinking about that. I've got several guys going through LTAP training. It, it has been a busy harvest. The phones have been ringing with, you know, we've had a couple culverts cave in and, you know, different things, so we've been extremely busy. Uh, worked and had crews out working late Friday and we had some out Saturday, working, trying to make sure the roads are safe for everybody out there. Um, and I know Scott's busy trying to get the courthouse stuff done, but I just have no men to bring up here to, to do that right now. Just have to, uh, he was wanting us to do stuff Friday, but we just couldn't do it, so. I, I, with the rain this week, I said if it rained, maybe we can send some eyes up to help, because I guess he's not able to get the.
Really, safety issues out on the road should take preference over a little bit of on work.
Yeah, really right, so, so we were doing that. Um, tomorrow I leave for Denver. I'm going to, presenting for governing on the Summit of Infrastructure and I'll be back. And then later this week I have a Wheat Heart Nutrition Board meeting. So that's what we've got going on this week and, uh, harvest is, is winding down. We've still got, we've still got people cutting out there and trying to still get some drives put in and different things where we graded out ditches, mowing, haven't got much done. We're gonna get after it though. Let's start all that up.
That's Max's favorite, motion.
I make a motion with you.
That's what I think.
At eleven thirty-seven, Hess moves, Ronk seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ronk.
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried, officially adjourned.